Good morning.
Good morning.
For the record, I'm Nancy Johnson, Team Punta Gorda. I have David Schutz, Healer Harbor, and Dr. Richard Whitman, also from Healer Harbor. And we'd like to introduce a project to you that has broad implications for the health of our waterways. It's called Citizens Partnership for Clean Canals. The Florida State Department of Environmental Protection has declared that our waterways are impaired. That's very interesting, but we really want to know with what and from where. So we've developed a monitoring project to determine the source and the nature of the impairment. If you just take a section to reflect on this slide, all of the ways that clean water impacts us, I know that sounds obvious, but if you look at property values, tourism, boating, fishing, our waterways are extremely important to us. We've created a collaborative project of stakeholders and citizens volunteers. I think, did we miss one? Did. No. Yeah, there we go. There's our collaborative, right there. And we have two nonprofits, Healer Harbor and Team Punta Gorda. The city of Punta Gorda has been at the table. Brittany Metzler has been there for the city. We're working very closely with Brandon Moody and the Charlotte County Monitoring Project. We have been all at the table for about a year now or more. And the University of Miami will be the data, will be doing the data. Okay. So you know about Team Punta Gorda because we're all over this city and have worked with this council for a long time, gardens, loner bikes, downtown landscaping, et cetera. But we have begun this project because we want to provide the basis for a data-driven conversation about the status of the waterways. Team Punta Gorda is providing the administrative portion of the project and the volunteers. I see Karen McCage up in the audience, who's our volunteer coordinator. And Healer Harbor is the science team. Now I'll turn it over to David.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm Dave Schutz. I'm the fun one. We are Healer Harbor. We've been working for a while. We do research, we do education programs, and we advocate for the environment. We live in this town. We know what's going on. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit comprised of scientists and volunteers. We have no paid employees. We do research and testing of local waterways. We provide a variety of educational opportunities. Our board has combined over 100 years of experience in water quality and ecological education. We've been around a little bit. Whether it's a problem with invasive calerpa that we see here, or blue-green algae, which is actually a bacteria here, we're out on the harbor collecting samples. We respond to public questions. We've been, this, excuse me. Our waterways have been designated as non-attainment. Our aquatic systems may look simple, but they're much more complex, and we need help from experts to understand and address these issues and these situations. If we take a look at this map here, we see where the waterways are impaired for fetal indicator, fecal indicator bacteria. Okay? At this point, I want to introduce our Dr. Richard Whitman. Thank you.
You want the clicker? You want me to do it?
You do it.
Okay. I want you to know that I came out of retirement 50 years of doing exactly what I'm doing now, and that's water quality research. And I have, I don't know where you got the 100, but I have over 50 years from NASA, Indiana University, USGS, and National Park Service, and now Healer Harbor. And I came out of retirement because I saw an opportunity to do something that's never been done in the United States, and that's do a sophisticated, professional job of microbial source tracking for fecal indicator bacteria with volunteers, saving the city and our constituents 95% of what it would cost. We recruited the county, Brandon Moody, NOAA, out of Miami, the same people do the hurricanes, but they do microbiology, University of Miami, to combine, okay? The entire team's probably pushing with the members here, 200 years of experience. Okay? I only gauge myself, and academics do, by how many citations your work has generated. And to date, Google Scholar says I've generated 7,300 citations on this subject. So I've done this before, and, but this is really, really special because nothing affects our reputation and our peace of mind and our economy than not, than having too much fecal indicator bacteria in your backyard. Okay? So this is serious stuff to us. Next, so let me go back, okay? Because they've already mentioned this, I wanted to point out, this is the PGI-affected area that's been listed on the Clean Water Act 303D list of non-attainment for fecal coliform. That's what we're going to talk about today. And we have another one that is co-jurisdiction with the county, Alligator Creek, which has been on the list for a long time. Riviera all the way up to the North Fork. And so this is the way the process, once you've been on this list, okay, you have to go through this process by federal and state criteria and statutes. You assess the water, you determine whether it's impaired, and you're placed on the 303D list or you're not. You're on 303D list at least a good 60, 70% of the county now. Okay? The canals that are opening into Ponse de Leon and that, and Alligator Creek, not the northern portion that opens up to the Peace River. Okay? What do you do? Well, in a TMDL, you do two things. You monitor, as Nancy pointed out, continuous monitoring before and after your implementation of remediation, and you study it. So we've divided that up between Team Punta Gorda, which is headed by Karen, and HOH, which is doing the research. What happens next? You either show that it's not sewage, okay, that it's animal, and that it's not anything you can control, and you're delisted. That's a happy face, okay? If you find that it is, then you go over to this bottom area, and that's when the problems, you know, the money starts to, you have to get professionals and make a plan and remediate. Okay? So that's where we are, right there on the top right-hand side. Next, please. Okay, we're talking about the research, and Dave's going to be talking about the monitoring side of it. Now, it's very important, I'm going to give you just a little glimpse at what research is being generated. It's ongoing and evolving. Just yesterday, we discovered, in Alan Taylor's backyard, that the dissolved oxygen yesterday morning went down to zero, stayed at zero for five hours, okay? We have continuous monitors placed at several locations, okay, between the county and ourselves. So.
Where was that one?
Zero, anoxic, anaerobic.
But where was that?
That's at Alan Taylor's Cativa Court. Alan, raise your hand.
5029, Cativa Court.
Okay.
We'll be pointing it out on the map later in the presentation.
Yeah. It's ground zero right now because it's right in the middle of Rim Canal between Ponse and Alligator Creek. Okay? And we got Alan to sit there through storms and whatnot. Okay? So here's a little, go back one. Oh, okay.
Forward one?
Yes. Okay. Okay. I want to talk about the regional, local, and event perspective of the research. So we're going to just kind of get up high, and then we're going to go in all the way down to local, so you get a feel for it. Okay? That's the outline. Next, please. So let's look at some of the regional things that are happening. There's lots of things we're measuring. One of those things is color, okay? Does color tell us anything about fecal coliform, our nutrients, our salinity, or what have you, okay? And this is a, pretty much, just a calculation, okay? A statistical calculation. Same thing they're using for poll analysis on the upcoming elections. I was able to predict, using over 300 observations over the last four years, a non-compliance in 70% of the cases, you can see it up on top, when water was in compliance, okay, on the very top, and another 70% on when it was in, when it's not in compliance, okay? So statistically, we could take water, look at it, that brown stuff, and we could tell you whether it's in or out of compliance, 70%, that's amazing results in my field, okay? And that's one of the breakthroughs that we, as a team, have come through for science and for management, and hopefully someday it'll be implemented. Next slide, again, we're still at the regional scale, okay? Next slide.
Working.
Should I hit this? Okay. Okay. Correlations, relationships. That is your first hint where it's coming from, okay? So we look at Peace River on the top. The state has a station at Gilcrest. The state also has a one in Ponse de Leon. We're monitoring Ponse, we're doing Alligator Creek, and we're looking at the state data on Burnsthor. The thicker the line, the higher correlation, the closer the relationship, and the more you want to look at that particular line. So you have vertical lines, horizontal lines, they're very thin, the relationship between Peace River and Alligator Creek, very, very thin, Burnsthor, further away than Peace River, okay? Now, Lee County might have different relationship, but look at the relationship between Peace River and Ponse, that's what I focus on. Why is Peace River and Ponse doing that, okay? It's not just rain and seasonality, otherwise we wouldn't see all these things throughout the year. And the same with Ponse and Alligator Creek, and Alligator Creek and Ponse and Burnsthor, okay? So we already know there's a regional going up and down with the bacteria. That's a big deal, okay? That doesn't mean that there's a point source. It doesn't support a point source. Could be runoff, okay? Could be a lot of things, okay? Wetlands, who knows, okay? It could be Peace River, especially Ponse de Leon. Okay, next.
Technical difficulty.
See, the goal was to see if we could stump a PhD with technology.
I'm responsible for the technology in this organization, that's me. And we're advancing here on the laptop, but not on the screen for some reason. I didn't bring.
He's doing that.
You have to, you have to be at the mic, no, you have to be at the microphone.
Okay, I can't, then. Ah, yes. Thank you, thank you. Okay. Now, this looks complicated, it's a histogram.
Richard, you have to be at the microphone.
This looks complicated, but, and it's a histogram, but you see, he's trying to draw a normal curve for Alligator Creek at 41, that's, the county's doing that, we're doing Alligator Creek in Riviera, okay? But we're looking at four years of data. And what I want you to focus on here is Alligator Creek at Riviera, the top of that curve, bell-shaped curve it's trying to write, is lower than the bell-shaped curve at 41, okay? It's very important. Is it coming from the marina? Is it coming from the harbor? No! Look at that. It's, actually gets higher as you move towards 41 and above, okay? So that means that the upstream location is a source of fecal indicator bacteria, maybe, and probably not the only source, but we have to look upstream, and so we are looking at two more places on Alligator Creek now, Burnsthor Isles as well as 41. Next, please. Okay, so we had this big storm, Debbie came in, and Alan and Ann Taylor decided they would be the environmental heroes, and they were out there the entire storm, okay? Let me tell you, that was something, okay? But being sailors, they could handle it. And we got some great data. Next. Okay, so I'm preparing these filters for the University of Miami and NOAA, who are going to do the DNA, and you can tell where the bacteria comes from, from a dog, cat, cattle, human, so forth, from the DNA analysis. And so that has to be filtered and frozen, and then sent off when we get enough. But I want you to just look at just the sediment, okay, in those filters. On the left-hand side is, Alan went out there before the storm, we knew when the storm was coming, and we took a water sample, a half a quart, and we filtered it, okay? Now, look what happened at the Rim Canal, okay? After the storm, this is post-storm, the next morning. It actually cleaned up the water, that storm, three inches of rain. Isn't that cool? Okay? But look below, after the storm, okay? Alligator Creek, it's dirty, very, very dirty compared to the Rim Canal, okay? And then here's the biggest one of all, Ponse de Leon. Anybody that's been on Ponse, going in and out of that canal, knows that current is crazy, right? And that brings up sediment, the story comes in, settles down, storm, pushes it out. Some of that comes probably from Peace River, who knows, okay? But once it gets in, okay, it's hard to get, it's like Hotel California, you can get in, check in any time, right? Okay? It just swirls in there. And so we, we know that that is a suspicious source already, okay? We'll know more when we get the lab analysis from Miami back. Next slide? Okay, so here we are, the Taylors are doing, are sampling this, we're looking at the rainfall, they have a rain gauge, and green line right there, and you see the increasing, increasing to three inches. Now, the purple bars are the bacteria, okay? See, one's up to 3,500 cells, okay? I want you to remember a number, 130 is the state and federal limit, okay? You cannot exceed that more than 10% of the time. It was 3,500 in the middle of that storm, okay? Magnitude's higher, okay? But it came down by the end of the storm, and then was back to 50. Not so with the harbor. We had fish kills, we had horseshoe crab, we had no oxygen that Dave witnessed, okay? Very serious. So it looked good in the harbor, but, I mean, in the canal, it wasn't very good in the harbor. Next. Okay, this is the last slide I'm going to show you. It has to do with management. This is a new, a new start, and we have the sand that's been built for these stem walls and so forth. And you can see the erosion, there was aprons, okay, but they didn't, they failed, okay, to keep the water out. On the left-hand side, you see part of that erosion, you see, and failed apron fence that, some of it, but the majority over on the top right is coming down the ditch and through the culverts and now into the canal, okay? Here's the plume, okay? And Dave is taking the, not Dave, but Alan's taking the sample right here, about 30 feet, 40 feet from that plume, and this is the numbers he gets, okay? 8,164, highest I've ever seen in the watershed. I don't care where it is. And again, the limit's 130. That's more than enough to put you out of compliance. Even if you take an average of that, it's just way, way too high. You'll never get to 130, okay? And that's one of the reasons, I'm not saying this particularly, but that's one of the reasons you are on the 303D list, okay? Because of incidences like this, related storm runoff off the streets, who knows, septic fields, we don't know, okay? Yet. But we're going to find out. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. The objectives of our program are to establish a canal monitoring program and put it in place.
Could you please step to the mic? This is being recorded, so we have to have you at the mic.
I apologize.
Thank you.
I'm not good with my mic work, I've got to work on that. We want to establish a permanent canal monitoring program for Punta Gorda, something that would be ongoing and sustainable. And we'd like to help to bring the canals into compliance with the state water criteria. I imagine everybody would like that. These are some of our volunteers. As I said before, nobody is paid in this operation. Everybody's a volunteer. They donate their gas, they donate their time, they donate whatever I can get them to bring when we come out to these things. We've got two crews in the canal monitoring program now. We break into crews in the morning and head in different directions. As time goes by, we recruit more members and more funds. We want to increase the number of testing locations. As I've said before, each test is like a pixel in a picture, and we have to have all of the pixels in order to be able to properly interpret that picture. So there's a lot of work to be done. These are the current CPCC testing locations. We've been talking a lot about the Taylor's home, which is located here on the Rim Canal, okay? This is Ponse de Leon Park, and this is the dock at the Riviera. Those are the four locations where CPCC is testing currently.
Support from this program comes from a variety of organizations. The Rotary has donated twice. Charlotte County has provided us with a MAC grant for over $20,000 in addition to use of their lab and some lab services. In-kind contributions from Healer Harbor and the University of Miami have exceeded $60,000. We want to thank the city of Punta Gorda for their support, and becoming a partner is an important project. Questions?
Any questions? Melissa?
I was asked to ask you, Burnsthor Isles, are we moving that way? I think you mentioned that quickly.
I don't think we've sampled it, we've done it.
Sir, you have to be at the microphone, I'm really sorry.
Karen can give us a better update, but yes, it's locked in.
Okay.
And Tom, thank you, Tom, for suggesting that location, right there at the old lock.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Have you done fecal testing at Title Creek? And where have you done it, if you've done it at Title Creek?
We have not.
Okay. Okay, but that would be a good area as well. And then how much does it cost? I mean, I know everything with nonprofits, especially when you don't get paid, a lot of stuff can cost, so how much does this cost you on an annual basis to do this?
Commercially, or it costs us?
Costs you.
Right now, it's cost, well, do you have a better number? I'm thinking like 35 or so, but.
Well, if we went through the combined contributions.
I think that we'll be at about $50,000 for this first year in the various grants and contributions that we have. However, Richard's plan is a pretty good-sized expansion coming up, and that's going to cost quite a bit more in terms of equipment. Most of the money that we, that we have spent so far has been on equipment purchase and supplies, but that is going to expand. I don't know what you will predict as an expanded cost for year two. Thank you.
Well, I'll tell you that, we just turned in, Brandon Moody from the county's turned in a grant proposal to Gulf of Mexico Alliance for $75,000, and now it's only because we had $100,000 cap, but commercially, this is, it started at 150K to do, if you had to hire it up, maybe closer to 100.
I still have more if anybody. So I understand the pixel, you know, in a picture, are you getting a pattern yet? And what, to me, is really important is, we see this failing, and it's failing pretty bad right away. Do we have any indication of when we can start fixing after these testings? Do we have anything, any kind of program looking, it might be out of your...
The initial program was exploratory to decide where we need to go next. We started with four locations, we want to expand to 10. It might be premature for us to indicate anything before we get to those 10 locations and start to get more data.
It's just so sad because we're failing right now, and...
We're working as fast as we can.
I understand that, yes. And thank you for doing this.
Trust me. We've been doing, this county, I mean, the state has been doing this since 2017, and before then it was fecal coliforms, so we switched indicators. Okay? So that gives us a good baseline, okay? Over 300 observations. And what's cool is, all these stations we're talking about, they're all sampled simultaneously, so they can be compared to one another. So we have a great baseline, and it's going to take a year or two of monitoring before we see enough pixels to see what's going on at these additional stations.
And you're meeting with, like, the senator to try to, like, hopefully, hand in hand, look at something that you're going to be doing with the data to bring it in?
We, we haven't launched any political activity at this point in time yet.
Okay. Thank you.
I felt we needed to have something actionable in order to approach.
Thank you.
David?
So I have just a curiosity. I started my career as an environmental attorney with the, what is now the Department of Environmental Protection. And by, when I started in 1980, subdivisions like PGI were prohibited because of the presumed lack of adequate flushing to maintain water quality within the systems. Is PGI somewhat different than the typical subdivisions around the state with respect to, you know, the flushing characteristics? Or is it going to be inherently a problem with respect to decreased water quality, decreased dissolved oxygen? And then what, if you do find at least what the source of the coliform is, how are you going to resolve that without improving the flushing characteristics of the PGI?
Okay, first of all, it's, it's good to look at PGI as a big settling pond, okay? It was elongated, the water comes in, the stuff settles, you know, the muck down there, and when that stuff gets resuspended, then we get a compliance problem, okay? It's a typical, there's really two kinds of canals, a flow-through like we would have for Alligator Creek and the dead ends, okay? So I know Brandon wants to go up to the very tip of them, whether it's golf course or wherever, and see if there's a differential in freshwater. But I will tell you, from our monitoring right now, it looks like the flushing is inadequate to keep that oxygen high and then nitrogen's low, okay? So that's, that's the biggest problem. The higher you go upstream, the less flushing there is. And so the salinity, amazingly, only changed two or three parts per thousand in 24 hours going through two tidal cycles, okay? That's very low flushing.
On your one slide, you had an N of 223 or something like that.
Here or earlier?
Keep going. Right there, 223.
Yeah, 223 observations, yeah.
Pardon?
Those are my number of observations, number of months that they've sampled.
The number, so N is equal to what?
Number of samples.
Yeah, N is the number of samples, right. But it's at those four locations, okay? So you have to divide by four.
I thought you might have been referencing a T N, which would have been extremely high.
All the statistics I'm showing you are significantly high, at the .05 level or less.
.05 or less?
Yes, sir. Much less.
Donna?
Yes, so you talked about other locations. What other locations would you like to begin work on?
David? Let me get my canal map. Okay. The locations chosen, were chosen because they represent intersections between the inner canal system and the rim canal system. And so we're going to these locations to find out where there was activity or where there was problems, and then want to work our way further back up into the canal system and see if that part of the canal system is consistent with what we're seeing at this intersection. So we had put together with Brandon Moody a location of 10, a map, I'm sorry, I should be speaking into the microphone, I apologize. We did put together a map with 10 locations, I just don't have it on the PowerPoint here, but it's within the canal system primarily. One of them was further up Alligator
Well, Charlotte Park is kind of critical because they're still on septic in Charlotte Park. And even though they're not in the city limits, they are within our city borders and almost on play, sort of in the middle of our city limits.
Yes.
So I was helpful, I helped develop the human marker, and it's called HF, Human Factor 183. And if there's human sewage in there, we'll see it. And that's why we're doing that. And if it's seagulls, well, that's something else, okay? Completely different story. And that's because seagull poop or dog poop is not as, does not have the health effects as human sewage, the viruses.
So the main impairments you're seeing, fecal indicators and sediment?
No, it's when the sediment gets resuspended, okay? We're not sampling the sediment itself. We're going to do that with Brandon in a separate study. But there are other impairments, nitrogen, phosphorus, oxygen, but this is the one that I thought we could focus on, okay?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Just to address a question that came up earlier. Somebody asked, what does it mean, zero oxygen percent? Well, think about it. All of the game fish that are desirable require a lot of oxygen. The ones that can leave, the ones that can't leave die. You know, hold your breath. It's the same for them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. We're going to move on to Agenda Item 6E, which is the water meter update.